All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, welcome everyone. Glad you were able to make it through some of the city traffic and construction. Roll call please, Thomas.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Ocala.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Have a quorum, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. I have number one, it's a motion for the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Um, with the additions.
Second. So moved, whatever you need.
All in favor?
Aye.
Starting off good, that was I have number one. I have number two is a motion approving our minutes from July twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. The motion carries. I have number three, under awards and recognition, say it's not true, Jim Halsey. Say it is not true. Um, before Jim gets to give his fifteen-minute speech, I would like to make in front of everybody, uh, share a funny story that some of you may have heard. Uh, goes back a few years when there was a fire department issue and we had a work session across the, uh, right through the hallway there and got a little bit later and, and Jim had come with fellow firefighter and friend, um, uh, who was it? Um, oh gosh.
I don't remember.
Tigler, it was Tigler. He leans over and says, hey, uh, Tiggy's got a way you can get me right home. Jim lets a block for me, I said, yep, I gotcha, knowing full well in my head what he's gonna experience when we get out in that parking lot. So sure enough, the meeting gets over and we walk out in the parking lot and Jim sees what I'm driving that day. Happens to be a little scooter and he, his comment was, holy fiddlesticks, something like that, something like that. And I said, yeah, hop on, hold me like you love me. And we didn't depart the parking lot more than half a block because whatever you do, just do not drive by the fire department. The wrong thing to tell me. So we circled that bad boy honking the horn, Jim on the back of my scooter, so. I'm gonna miss that guy. Jim, congratulations, eighteen years with the fire service. The fire service certainly, uh, I'm near and dear to my heart because my dad was a fireman and I appreciate what you do day to day. And to be able to, uh, retire and hopefully have a long retirement, uh, we certainly hope the best for you and, and do appreciate the service that you provided, just the entertainment for heaven's sakes. But great guy, I know, I know everybody I work with and I see folks here, you know, um, Tom Schulte, you recognize him because he's not wearing the dress blues like some of the firemen here that are in these dress blues. But a lot of support you have here with the firemen and their, and their firefighters and their family and, and, uh, to just kick off his retirement. Chief, do you have any words?
Yeah, Jim actually spent twenty-two years in the fire, uh, fire department. He's became a member in two thousand and three, went full-time in two thousand and seven and now he's able to retire here in two thousand and twenty-five. I think the day he gave me the letter, that grin has been on his face ever since. Jim is a, a hard-working individual that we could always count on at the fire department, um, did anything he asked of him, um, and, and did it to the best of his ability. Man of many talents and we're truly gonna miss him.
Appreciate it. Um, we do have a, a card and I did the block lettering myself, Jim. And, uh, and a plaque here, so I'd like to present that to you. If you want to say a few words too, that'd be great.
Really don't.
You don't? I want pictures. Thank you again, Jim. Enjoy your retirement. I'm sure I'll see you around the neighborhood. Uh, moving on, since we do have a retirement, we have a new firefighter, Ian Caruso. Jim, you wanna tell us a little bit about him?
Out with the, uh, experienced. In with the new. Ian Caruso started the fire department in January of two thousand and three. Uh, he's been part-time since then.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
What did I say? Oh, two thousand and twenty-three, my bad.
When he was two.
He wasn't even born in two thousand and twenty-three. My bad. So I think Ian was, uh, bit by the, the firebug early, wanted to become a firefighter as soon as he got going. Um, we're extremely lucky to have him. So, um, the other night we figured he may be the youngest full-time member of the fire department ever. So, um, he's got a lot of years ahead of him. Um, he's got a great attitude, he's smart, he's talented, and we're looking forward to a lot of years with him in the fire department.
That's excellent. Well, welcome aboard, Ian, and I, I think you have your girlfriend or fiancee, Maddie. That's gonna pin, what's a fiancee? Pin something on, Jim, is that right?
Yeah, we're gonna have Maddie pin his badge on for him.
Right on. You guys wanna step forward right in front here so everybody can see you and get some pictures too?
Make sure you poke him at least twice before you.
Give it a good one, yeah. Make it hurt, make it hurt. Remember that.
It's not real once you're on lock.
Excellent, very good and welcome. Thank you, uh, Austin Fire for showing up and support and congratulations on retirement and long years of service there, Jim and Ian, welcome. Uh, moving on, we also have the Salvation Army, some new folks, uh, uh, running our Salvation Army. Lieutenant Juan Hernandez and Omaira Servantans. Do you wanna come and introduce yourself a little bit? Thanks, folks. Welcome to Austin and, and thanks for what you do for this, for the Salvation Army.
Thank you for your time. My name is, we're from Austin, we're from, uh, we're from, uh, we're from Austin. We've been COVID and after COVID and we already found this place, come. We are very grateful, uh, to be here, uh, we are very, uh, we are very, very excited for the opportunities that we have and we are here to serve. The Salvation Army, uh, mission is to serve and we embrace that and thank you, Mike, for, uh, make this possible and for this opportunity and, and we hoping to serve the community. We hoping to, to be here for a couple of years and, and even though we are Packers fans.
Austin Packers, right? Was that what we heard?
We are very grateful. Uh, we went out, uh, meeting the community and, and during our food pantry, during our, uh, uh, meals, uh, we have the privilege to meet, uh, the community. We are very, very excited for, for the future that this community and for the partnership, uh, with the Salvation Army and the city of Austin.
Excellent. Where did you stop before Austin? Where was your?
I'm originally from Mexico, uh, then I lived, uh, twenty-two years in Wisconsin, two years in Chicago in college training, and this is our first appointment.
Oh, really? Well, that's great, exciting.
So she's from?
I'm from Puerto Rico. Uh, I moved sixteen years ago, seven, to Wisconsin when we got married, then two years in Chicago. We got two teenagers, uh, girls, uh, and we're happy to be here, to have this opportunity to serve. Uh, so wherever they send us, because we don't know where we're going in the next three, five years, uh, this is gonna call be our new home and always gonna be in our heart. Thank you for open the, the city for us. It has been a great experience.
Well, thank you. We're happy to have you. And I, I saw the gentleman back here when you mentioned you're a Packers fan, he was shaking his head, so I don't think you're getting any food donations out of that guy. Food donations are gonna plummet.
In my office and my door, they already put, uh, Vikings.
Oh, is that right?
Vikings, we are Viking, they are very, uh, we are very excited, uh, uh, to be here and we are very grateful and, and we thank the city because the city has been very welcoming and receiving open arms and we are very happy for them.
So if you need us, you know where to find us.
Absolutely.
We are neighbors, so we're here for you.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Well, thanks for coming and introducing yourselves, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, on to, uh, I have number four, the consent agenda, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Under award bidding, uh, I have number five is receiving bids for the twenty twenty-five sanitary sewer lining project, awarding the bid, Stephen.
Yes, council had budgeted seven hundred and fifty-nine, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a project to line sanitary sewers in different areas of town. We identified two main neighborhoods being the Wildwood Park neighborhood and the Sterling neighborhood. Both of those, they're unique neighborhoods where the sanitary sewer lines actually run down the backyards, they're not out in the street. So there, uh, you can imagine folks have a lot of trees and different things in their backyards, so, uh, there's potential for root issues. Um, in those areas, they're also difficult to access, so those are some of the two areas we wanted to tackle first. So before you tonight is, uh, bids for that sewer lining. We had four bids, municipal pipe tool was the low bidder at six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. So with that, uh, we have funding using our sanitary sewer fund to fund this project and we'd recommend awarding the bids to municipal pipe tool.
Very good. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Lang? Although let's take a resolution, motion for resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number six, uh, big surprise, uh, point of sale, maybe we have a little, this is our third meeting, I think, formally on it. And I firmly believe that everybody on this DS and everybody in the audience, uh, wants what's best for the city of Austin. Residents, infrastructure, everything, I guar- I guarantee we all do. How we go about it is gonna be a little bit, uh, more of a challenge, but we're up for that challenge. I think what I'm hearing in the past is we do need to put the brakes on this thing, at least until March one, get things figured and sorted out. I'm hopeful that that's what we can do, because I do believe when you have three million dollar, or three million gallons of wastewater going on a regular day to that plant, and then it rains an inch and you get ten million, there's, there's some infiltration going on. Whether it's private homes, whether the city's, city sewer system, uh, certainly, we all have a hand in it and we can't have that kind of volume treating that kind of clean water, uh, when it rains. So we do need to do something and I'm hopeful that we can get some, some mutual resolution. We're looking for council's, uh, motions or conversation, whatever you wanna do here, council.
I, uh, move that we approve as amended.
That puts it out till March one, get a committee together? Right, okay?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'm looking for, uh, Tom, might as well take a roll.
It's a motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we'll put that out, Stephen, we'll just get a committee of select people together that are helpful and we'll make this thing work. Thank you, folks.
Do we have to do it?
Oh, yeah. For six B for the adoption ordinance, we need more, uh, ordinance for a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Well, hopefully we get this thing figured out, um, in a positive way, um, and since it's moving forward anyway, I would, I.
Ordinance passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, folks, for, uh, all the information that you provided and interest you have in this, and I think we can get to where we need to be, so appreciate your interest.
Mr. Mayor, if people wanna be involved in a stakeholders group and give input into the edits, how would, how would they about that process?
Probably contact, Stephen, you'll be the point person on this, right?
Yeah, please, uh, please reach out to me if you're interested in being part of the committee.
Very good.
And I would agree. I mean, I think a good step forward, I know there's a lot of stuff that we've gotta figure out here, so let's, at a minimum, push it back to March and continue to kinda work through all the details. So, and thank you for everybody that's been involved and raised their voices and, and at the end of the day, if we move forward with this, we've gotta make sure that we've got it functioning well for everybody in the city, so. I think that's a good step forward.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven is resolution approving fees for temporary cannabis event permit registration, Bree.
So I included some information in your packet, but as part of Minnesota's cannabis legalization, um, the Office of Cannabis Management is going to start accepting applications for cannabis event organizers starting August first. The city ordinance has already designated that these types of events are not going to be allowed on city property, but the clerk's office is going to recommend implementing a daily fee of a hundred dollars, and this is mirroring the fee that we currently charge for community festivals. So this will help offset administrative and enforcement costs, so we're asking that council approve the fee. Let me know if you have any questions.
Where would you envision something like this happening if it can't be on city property?
It would be held on private property.
So just people's homes, they gotta get a license for?
Hypothetically, maybe in the ballroom at, um, Doubletree.
I see. All right, very good. Thanks, Bree. Uh, looking for resolution, item number seven?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number eight is resolution granting the theater liquor license to the Paramount Theater, Bree.
So back in April, um, we had Paramount Theater looking to obtain, uh, theater liquor license. We don't have this type of license in the city of Austin. So, um, we brought this to council, we looked at allowing them to serve alcohol beverages during film screenings and different events. They have, uh, presented the city clerk's office with all the certified documentations that we require for this license. So we are recommending approval for this license and looking for council approval.
Council, any questions for Bree on this?
Nope, I think it's a great step forward, I would move that we approve it.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Enthusiastic aye.
Obala.
Aye.
You only get one vote though, right?
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six or seven to zero with.
Not so enthusiastic, Councilmember Fisher. I have number nine, moving on, um, is a resolution approving paid family medical leave private plan, Trish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, as you may be aware, uh, effective January first, twenty twenty-six, the state, um, has adopted and will be implementing a paid family, uh, uh, leave under the paid, Minnesota Paid Leave Law. The state will be administering that, but, uh, entities have the option of, um, adopting a private plan. And so in, in accordance with that and their regulations, uh, we did work with one of our current providers and went out to bid for a private plan. And, uh, MetLife came in as the low bid with a two-year rate guarantee, uh, so it is less than the state premium, so, um, it is a savings to the city. Uh, the MetLife plan will mirror the state of Minnesota plan as we are required to do. So this is hopefully also ease of implementation and, um, and running the program, MetLife has had, uh, has done this in other states, so they are familiar with this type of leave, uh, law and administering it. So, uh, with that, I would, uh, request approval of MetLife for our private plan for twenty twenty-six.
Very good, sounds like the best outcome. Thank you, Trish. Council, any questions?
I have just a math question, because I'm not so good at scale. Um, if we approve this point seven-nine percent plan and I earn a hundred dollars on my paycheck from the city, the city is going to pay thirty-nine cents and I'm going to pay thirty-nine cents into the fund on a hundred dollars, is that the right math?
Right, yeah, right now, where it's anticipated that we're moving forward with the fifty-fifty split as, um, allowed and stated under the state, state plan, um, so that would be the anticipated. If anything were to change, uh, during negotiations or anything, that might be different, but as of right now, we would be, um, moving forward with the fifty-fifty split.
And Trish, the benefit, building off Laura's question then, the benefit for doing this and having a lower premium rate is then I don't have to pay, if we did like the state, maybe I'm paying fifty-five cents, the city's paying fifty-five cents, so there's a lower cost for everybody.
It's a lower cost for both the employer and the employee, um, plus a two-year rate guarantee. Uh, the, the state's plan will, um, review the status of the, and the health of the plan as of January thirty-first of twenty twenty-six for a possible increase then in twenty twenty-seven. So we're, we have a two-year rate guarantee.
I'd, I'd also throw out, um, really don't overlook how beneficial I think it will be for the city and our employees to have a private, pr- private organization that we're going through. Uh, because any organization that goes through the state, you're gonna have a brand-new department set up with brand-new people trying to administer this benefit right off the bat. I think it's gonna be choppy, let's just say, so.
Three years into cannabis, we haven't figured it out. Why would you say that?
So, you know, this is something that our employees are, it's, it's gonna be a benefit that they get that hopefully will go very smoothly with the other benefits that they get and they'll have a one-stop shop for all of this stuff.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I would anticipate MetLife, since they've done this before, um, should be smooth for our employees, so it's a benefit in that way as well.
Excellent.
So here's the other scale question. Assuming this goes through and gets all the way through labor negotiations, what's the annual added expense to the budget for the city?
If we're pa- if we end up paying half, you're probably in the range of seventy, sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars is our half.
Per year.
Additional cost, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Trish? If not, looking for resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Trish, for your work on that. Uh, I have number ten is resolution declaring the structure at seven hundred Tenth Street Northeast as hazardous. Hally.
So moved.
Welcome back, by the way. Welcome back.
So this property was actually a hazardous structure some time ago and was bought in tax forfeiture. Um, the individual, uh, just never, uh, got off the ground, uh, to be able to do anything with the property. Uh, it's in an industrial-zoned area and he had, uh, ideas about, uh, fixing it up, uh, as a resident, which wasn't allowed. Um, and so now we're at this impasse and he's just essentially taking anything of value out of it right now. Um, and so it's just left open, uh, no doors, windows, it's in pretty bad, pretty bad shape.
Thank you.
We're looking to secure the, the building and to, uh, probably eventually remove it.
Very good. Thank you, Hally, and Councilmember Fisher had a motion. Is there a second? Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Uh, thank you. I have number eleven is our addition, uh, approving an agreement with MINDOT for routine maintenance along Trunk Highway one oh five, Stephen?
Yes, we do this every two years with MINDOT and we're biennium cycle. It involves, uh, allows the city to get reimbursed for doing some minor maintenance on Highway one oh five through Austin. It's, it's essentially a, a nice agreement because residents expect us, they expect that to be plowed along with all of our other city roads. It would, it would look good if we lifted up our plows on one oh five and waited for MINDOT to come in and plow. We wanna be plowing that, you know, in conjunction with all of our other roads. So this allows us to get some reimbursement for that, for the plowing, the sanding, any minor patching that we do on that roadway. Give you an idea, in previous years, the, the biennium, so like, the last contract we signed had a four-point-five percent increase over the previous years. Um, our twenty-two to twenty-three cycle was a three-and-a-half percent increase. Before you tonight, these numbers for twenty-six and twenty-seven represent a three-and-a-half percent increase. So there's a small, small percentage increase each year, um, and that's kinda where those numbers have been historically as well. So with that, we'd recommend council approval for execution of this agreement with MINDOT.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang on this item? If not, looking for resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven-zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens addressing the council, anyone here in the chambers wishing to speak to council of items that went on the agenda? Hearing none, moving on to reports and recommendations, Craig.
Uh, I don't have one, but Mr. Lang has one. The mayor mentioned it at the beginning with, uh, starting of the Oakland Avenue project. You know, I, I just wanna mention to everyone in the public that we recognize that, uh, the end of July, early August is not the optimal time to start a major project like this. But there's lots of other circumstances that go into it and our, our focus this year is getting the Fourth Street and Oakland Avenue High School intersection completed. Because next year, the Fourth Street Bridge will be open, and Fourteenth Street will be under construction, so all that traffic will be following toward Fourth Street. So we recognize that, um, starting this project and having it carry into the start of school wouldn't be, isn't the perfect situation, but we need to get the Fourth Street intersection done to try to make next year a smoother construction year for traffic and vehicles. Um, in addition to that, we're also gonna jump down and we've started work today down by the fire station. So the focus of our twenty twenty-five construction season on Oakland Avenue is to get the Fourth Street intersection done and then get the two blocks on each side of Main Street completed, so from First Street Northeast to First Street Northwest. That is our main focus here for twenty twenty-five and we'll work with, you know, I mentioned to you, the school district, I said, you know, we do an intersection like Fourth Street. That has probably six different contractors that will be working in that intersection. So we're not only trying to coordinate work in the intersection amongst those six contractors, but we're also trying to pull those contractors from other projects they're working on. Maybe working out of town, working on state projects, whatever that might be. So just, there's a lot of, lot of things in play when we're working on projects like this and trying to coordinate all of that. Try to get the coordination to work out as quickly as possible, provide as least amount of impacts to everyone as possible. So we understand, timing isn't perfect, but we're, we're working with what we have to try to narrow down the scope of work for year and twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Stephen, appreciate the update. Uh, and the council, Becky?
Nothing.
Jason?
Happy fair week.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome back, Hally, excited to see you back. I'm sure we've got piles of problems for you to address, so.
Thank you, it's good to be back and feeling, feeling outfits better every day.
Good. Uh, and then I just wanna, uh, let folks know, I appreciate the folks who've reached out about, um, kind of the strange high-pitched noise that's kind of coming from the wastewater treatment plant area. Spoke with Stephen, we're gonna take a look at it and see, um, you're not crazy, there is a noise coming from that area and it's interesting where the sound travels. We're hearing it up on Spinner's Hill in particular right now, so, uh, gonna look into it, can't promise we'll have a quick fix right away, but we're gonna dig into it because I agree that it's not a pleasant sound. Thank you, Mike.
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
I wanna mention that Austin Artworks Festival is August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Uh, they're looking for volunteers, as always. It's a super fun gig and you get a free t-shirt for your two hours of, of volunteering, so check out their website to do that. Um, I also wanna say that, um, I really appreciated our first budget discussion last week, um, and thank you to, uh, the library board for attending. It's excellent to see that engagement and I hope we continue to see folks, um, really here, uh, listening for the budget discussions, because I think they're important. I, I really like doing it this way and giving, uh, more time for the department heads to, to talk to us directly and, and also chance to listen. So I hope we keep this, um, this method up in future years. And then finally, I wanna tell Mr. Lang, um, that, uh, I happened to get my chiropractic services from Dr. Bowlingberg, who is, of course, impacted by the, the closure of, um, Fourth and Oakland. And so I happened to go in there a couple of days after the intersection closed and she said, well, I tell you what, Laura, it's a lot easier for us to turn right and get out of our parking lot at night now. So there's always an upside.
River Claude has a soul.
Thank you, Laura. Obala.
Um, I wanna say congratulations to Jim for his retirement on the fire department. Uh, thank for his work for all these years and, um, then welcoming the new one, so, thank you.
Welcome, all right, okay. Uh, the only other report is, uh, Craig and I had a wonderful night last night at the Bonin Independence Day celebration in, of all places, Maple View City Hall. And there were so many comments from the folks that were, were invited there as, uh, to celebrate with them that this is happening in Austin, Minnesota. Technically Maple View, but I think it's in Austin, but it's absolutely amazing, the festival out there and they, they, they can put on a party, there was no doubt. They were, music was thumping, I'm still feeling it, um, might've had one or more alcoholic beverages. The food was amazing, so appreciate the invite and. the invite and, uh, they're amazing people and their culture is just beautiful. So, um, Wednesday's employee appreciation pizza party at the, uh, Fairgrounds, right? Wednesday? I will be gone. I'll be in Illinois. I can't make it, but it's two slices of pizza. I feel terrible for missing that. But, uh, get out there if you can for the city employees. Thank you. Put that on, the engagement committee on that, I'm sure. Uh, and then the, uh, August anniversaries are as follows. These people have been with the city, uh, some for twenty-four years, some for one. Uh, Kristen Olson with the library, twenty-four years. Josh Coonsy, fire, eleven. Hans Gilbert, fire, eleven. Julie Kleinfeldter, library, eleven years. Congratulations, Julie. Luke Reese, nature center, nine years. Emily Soltis, library, eight. Jeremy Mason, sewer maintenance for eight. Joe Johnson, street maintenance, uh, for seven. Ryan Mason, facilities building maintenance for seven. Craig Haggy, wastewater treatment plant, two years. Aiden O'Hara, police, one year. And Owen Smith, sewer maintenance, one year. We thank those folks and happy anniversary for, uh, their years of service. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn to Monday, August eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned and we'll take a, what, five-minute break till rewind tape and get the work session going. Thank you.